Yes, we have enough. We need four, I believe, for this.
Okay, it's five thirty. I'd like to call to order the West Fargo Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Second order of business is the approval of the minutes from our August ninth meeting.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded, moved and seconded to approve the minutes as published. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Minutes approved. Item number three. A twenty-two dash fifteen Maple Ridge at the Preserve's eighth addition, a retract, a retracement plat of lots seven and eight, block one of Maple Ridge at the Preserve, fourth addition, thirty-sixty and thirty-one hundred Cheyenne River Way, City of West Fargo, North Dakota. Wire?
Thank you. This application was received in order to accommodate combining two lots for a construction of a single-family dwelling. Property owners wishing to combine properties which have previously been platted for building across lot lines and/or increasing lot area to address district requirements may submit a retracement plat provided the following conditions are met. No additional right-of-way is required or being established. There's no proposed or perceived need for public improvements because of the combined platted lots. And lots to be combined are contiguous and under common ownership. The proposed retracement plat will not affect the property or the use. The retracement plat will be given a subdivision name with a lot and block number, which will be of benefit to the city and Cass County for administrative purposes. It is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that it's consistent with city plans and ordinances. I'm available to answer any questions, as is the applicant. This is not a public hearing.
It is not?
It is not.
Okay. Thank you. So. Pretty straightforward. Do we need any discussion or questions answered? It has been moved and seconded to approve the retracement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Approved. Item number four, public hearing. A twenty-two dash sixteen zoning ordinance amendment to title four. Did I say that right?
That's right.
You screw up those Roman numerals all the time. Of the city ordinances allowing for campgrounds within the A agricultural district.
All right, I'll take this one. Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
As was just mentioned, item four is a proposed zoning amendment relating to campgrounds within the agricultural zoning district. This draft text amendment was initiated by the city commission at the request of the Red River Valley Fair Association. And it's coming before you tonight for a public hearing and recommendation before moving along to the city commission for a second public hearing, as well as their ultimate consideration. So I'll start by providing a little bit of background history relating to this discussion to date. This is a little bit of a unique request, since it is coming to the city from an outside requester, I guess. And then I'll also provide an overview of the ordinance itself, a copy of which is included in your staff report. And also note that this is a public hearing item. So, in terms of a little bit of background context for this, why this is in front of you here tonight. The Red River Valley Fair Association is interested in expanding their existing campgrounds located at the Fairgrounds facility, which is within the city's extraterritorial jurisdiction, but outside of city limits. Just west of current city limits, south of Main Avenue there. Campgrounds are not permit, are not a permitted use within any of the city's existing zoning districts. And so the existing campground, which was established before the city established its zoning authority in that location, is considered a non-conforming land use, which just means that it's grandfathered as existing, but it's not allowed to expand or change. The Red River Valley Fair Association petitioned the city commission to initiate a zoning text amendment in order to allow for the campgrounds to expand. They made this request to the city commission back in June. But before taking any action on that request, the city commission directed or had the Red River Valley Fair Association host two public meetings with neighboring residents adjacent to the site that they were looking at. The association did hold two open house style meetings back in July of this year. I think they were attended by three area residents who were generally opposed to the location of the campground facility. But, you know, weren't really necessarily opposed to campgrounds in general. The Red River Valley Fair Association appeared again before the city commission on August first to report back on their, on their meetings and to kind of follow up on the discussion. I will say too, that the open house meetings were attended by, I think, four out of the five city commissioners as well. That was a publicly advertised meeting for the city commission as well. At the August first city commission meeting, there was discussion amongst the commissioners and the Red River Valley Fair Association regarding potential impacts to the existing residents in the area. They also discussed some potential alternative locations for a campground on the Fairgrounds property. And also discussed the likelihood that a large percentage of the campground would be used for temporary housing during the warmer months. According to the Red River Valley Fair Association, a lot of the campers that are there today are actually temporary workers or people looking for temporary housing during the summer months as they find work in our, our local metro here. Ultimately, after the discussion, the city commission voted four to zero to direct staff to work with the association on a potential zoning text amendment to accommodate campgrounds somehow within the zoning code. And so that's why this item is here before you tonight. And so, based on that direction, staff has worked with the association, as well as the city attorney, to draft the amendment, which is included in your packet here, and I'll just pull it up on the screen here as well. But, in essence, what staff is proposing in terms of accommodating campgrounds is, we're proposing that we amend the agricultural zoning district standards to include campgrounds and RV parks as a conditional use within the agricultural zoning district. As you know, conditional uses would require approval of a conditional use permit in order for that use to be allowed in the future. And so we'd be treating campgrounds and RV parks very similarly to the way that fairgrounds, for example, are currently treated. Same with things like archery ranges, gun ranges, and different uses that are conditional uses within the agricultural zoning district. Additionally, this ordinance would dictate that campgrounds and RV parks be licensed by the state of North Dakota and comply with all state regulations in regards to campgrounds and RV parks. Would also require that campgrounds and RV parks be restricted to areas outside of city limits, which means that they would only be allowed within the city's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction within the county, outside of city limits, within the agricultural zoning district. Would also require that the facility have an onsite manager. And that the applicant for a CUP would be, or a conditional use permit, would be required to provide a management plan for noise and any activities associated with the campground or RV park as part of the application process. Other kind of minor edits, I guess, are creating some definitions for campgrounds and RV parks and what a recreational vehicle is. Some clarification on the fact that conditional uses can be allowed on unplatted property within the city's zoning jurisdiction. And I think that's kind of the extent of it, so. Yep, yep. So again, only allowed in the extraterritorial area outside of city limits.
In either agricultural or un-
Yep. So outside of city limits, within the county, within our jurisdiction, our zoning jurisdiction, within the agricultural zoning district. So. So that's, that's the proposed amendment. I would also note that this is really kind of a two-part conversation in relation to the original request from the Red River Valley Fairgrounds Association. What's before you today is simply the amendment to allow the creation of a process for them to apply to. And so, you know, what you're kind of considering tonight is not the specific request of the fairgrounds. If this ordinance, as currently drafted, were to be approved, the Red River Valley Fair Association would need to then apply for a conditional use permit and go through the standard procedure for any conditional use permit, which would require a public hearing in front of this commission. It would allow you guys a chance to review, staff to review. Additionally, with any conditional use permit, it does allow the city to place any conditions deemed necessary to protect public health, safety, welfare. Historically, that, that has included things like buffering or spacing, screening, different kind of site-specific requirements to address any specific concerns. And so that would all be part of that discussion if this were to be approved. So I just want to make that clarification here as well. Also included in your packet are the North Dakota state statutes in regard to mobile home parks, trailer parks, and campgrounds. We're not talking about the mobile home parks component here, but the, excuse me. We're talking about, we're not talking about the trailer parks here tonight, but the mobile home parks and the campgrounds. They're all kind of part of the same section of the North Dakota Century Code. The state statutes require a number of different things in conjunction with the state administrative code. The North Dakota Department of Health, I believe it's their division of food and lodging, is the entity that's responsible for the licensing and and oversight, I guess, of campgrounds and RV parks within the state of North Dakota. Essentially, any campground or RV park is required to have an annual license with the state. I believe the state does periodic kind of checkups on the different facilities throughout the state. And then there's a number of different requirements that any new campground or RV park would be required to meet in terms of everything from lighting, playground facilities, sewer water, utility hookups, driveway spacing, spacing between pad sites. Kind of those, you know, typical things that you would look for as part of any campground or RV park. So those are included in the packet for reference and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I'll stop talking now and see what kind of questions you have.
I have a couple, if I may, before I open it up for public. Are there other properties within the extraterritorial area that fall into this non-conforming, grandfathered-in status, which are, would be affected by this?
As far as any other existing campgrounds?
Yes.
Not that I am aware of.
So the Red River Valley Fairgrounds is the only?
Correct. The North Dakota Department of Health does maintain a list of licensed campgrounds and RV parks on the, on their website. I looked at that a while back and I don't recall seeing any other.
That was my second question. So currently, they are licensed and inspected by the state already?
Correct.
At that facility?
Yep.
So the current existing lots that they have today are grandfathered in. They don't need additional permitting from the city for that, correct?
Yep.
If I'm understanding that?
Yep.
Okay. This is a public hearing and with that, I would open it up for comments from the public. If there are any, please step forward. Please let us know your name and address and so we can record.
Thank you. Mike Schomer, six twenty West Wind Drive, West Fargo.
I assume you were one of the adjacent properties?
I, yes. Adjacent property, myself and some of the other neighbors here as well. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for your time today. First of all, I just want to make clear, this is not a NIMBY issue. This is not a not-in-my-backyard issue. Been very supportive of the fairgrounds, all of the events they host. Everywhere from the fair to the racetrack, to the fireworks, different events and so forth. Our law enforcement utilizes the property for training purposes as well. Very much welcoming of all of that. So this isn't a NIMBY issue. Fairgrounds, or the current campground was there before we moved in. Have not complained about that one bit. I recognize I'm second. However, there is an established neighborhood there now. And that's something that we need to consider, all residents of, of the community, and not just that an organization wants to expand for money. You know, the fair association, as presented, did host two public hearings. Information was provided, as shared. Alternative options were discussed that would appease both the residents and the fair. However, the fair association has not pursued any of those options. They have not presented any additional plans to pursue, plans to expand north rather than south into the neighborhood. Rather, they could go north against a established industrial neighborhood, which would not have an impact on our residents directly. As I stated, this is now an established neighborhood. The campground will increase light, noise, blight. Although the campers currently used in the campground appear to be of somewhat good repair, if you, I believe we're going to more than triple the size of the campground, you can't ensure that. That will be blight that we will have to look into. Vehicles driving in the current campground shine lights into the backyards. If that is closer to our neighborhood, light will be, additional headlights and light will be in our yards, our backyards, our houses. Increased noise from congregate living, it's a given. Dogs barking, vehicle noise and so forth. Again, congregate living, this aren't just houses, this is, this is a campground. And again, the blight. The fairground has offered to put a chain link fence up for a barrier that will do absolutely nothing to address any of the concerns presented. They're making absolutely no effort to address any of these concerns. They did say they'll plant some trees, but even they recognized they're going to be one foot tall, that won't provide any barrier anytime soon. They have planted trees around the current campground. There's actually two layers of trees. You can still see the campground just fine. The trees do not present much of a barrier. And the fact that this proposed ordinance amendment will only impact one specific campground, and it's not going to be a blanket policy for the whole city of West Fargo, should be telling enough that this is not a good plan. This is not something that we should consider to protect our current residents that this does impact. The association is toting this as a family campground. They're going to put a dog park in. I know one of our current junior softball teams currently uses a dog park in Fargo to host practices because, one, the dog park's never used, and, two, there aren't enough fields for our youth here. So having a dog park doesn't mean that it's going to be used, and it's going to be used for families. They speak of the positive economic impact. Any campground within ten miles of the city of West Fargo will positively impact our community. It doesn't have to be within the territorial limits right against an established neighborhood. I mean, we know they're not going to be shopping at Ashley Furniture, Shields, or other stores. They may shop at Hornbacher's, Sandixon, Holiday. It's not going to have that large of an impact because of its location. What they don't speak of is the negative impact that it will have on our community. The increased calls of service from law enforcement, that's a cost to us as residents that they don't have to pay for as transient people in our neighborhood. Increased use of our jail, there's a daily cost to that. The reality is, there will be individuals arrested despite what the fairgrounds may be presenting. It does happen. In fact, despite the fact that at the public hearing, I brought data from the sheriff's department on the numbers of calls for service to their campground, and these have said now at the public, at the city commission meeting on the eighth of August, that they're not aware of police in their campground. Again, they're not being transparent. The data was provided, the calls for service between 2019 and 2021 has increased for that campground. Twenty twenty was an abnormal, anomaly. We know that for many reasons. So calls for service have increased between 2019 and 2021. And we know that fentanyl's here, fentanyl use is increasing, and we know transient housing is a hotbed for drug activity, drug trafficking and human trafficking. We have a human trafficking issue that many people are not addressing. We know that these transient locations are an increase for that. They're not discussing that. We don't want to enable the problem by allowing more transient individuals. And I believe, just clarification, I believe it was a split vote, three to one, at the city commission meeting on the eighth of August to pursue this. And I believe it was three to one with Commissioner George was on the fence, but she did vote in favor of this. So again, this isn't, there's no guarantee this is a family campground. You can't discriminate against single individuals. There's no way the fairgrounds can prevent this from being a man camp, which brings me to another point. The fairgrounds has not been transparent, and it did not come out until Commissioner Simmons had pointed out that the purpose of this expansion was to create a man camp for the individuals that are going to be working here on the, not the pipeline, excuse me, on the diversion. We don't want a man camp in our backyard. There's absolutely no way you can prevent that from happening once you agree to, on the expansion. And the fact that the Fairground Association didn't even publicly acknowledge that at any of the public hearings, but rather a commissioner had to call them out at a public hearing, is telling enough about what else they might not be telling you. And again, they're toting this as a family campground, and yet at the same time, they're saying that they need housing for the carnival workers and other transient individuals that use their property. So on one breath, they're saying this is for families. They presented this wonderful plan that in a package sounds beautiful. Why would we deny camping? We all love camping. I operate a, I coordinate a youth troop in the area. It's over sixty individuals. We go camping all the time. We love camping. In the backyard of an established neighborhood is not a place for that. The only individuals that would be doing that would be people coming here from other areas to work or play, and they bring other problems with them and other social ills that we are not publicly discussing. Additionally, they'll use other services such as medical, fire, and so forth. Taxpayers pay for that. What are we going to do if there's a fire? That comes out of our pocket, and then how many other individuals are impacted by that? There are other options that can be pursued within the county. If the county commission wants to pursue and wants a man camp, they can pursue that in the county, not within our territorial limits. Again, the association's provided no documentation or explanation on how they'll address any of the neighborhood concerns. A chain link fence, that. Just in summary, they've not been transparent with their plans. They've not presented additional options that were presented at the public hearing. So what was the purpose of the public hearing? We're still trying to figure that out as well. Once that campground is established, you can't get rid of it. We know that. We know we can't get rid of a problem once it's established. It takes a lot of paperwork, a lot of work, and a lot of resources, again, on taxpayers. This campground does not improve the quality of life for a single resident in, in West Fargo. We need to recognize that. We're trying to cater to transient population that does not provide any positive impact to our citizens in the established neighborhood there. Drug use and human trafficking, very much prevalent in transient housing. We need to recognize that, and we need to call attention to that. I mean, we need to consider our youth, too. Our youth are impacted. There's already a problem here. So again, this commission has the ability to protect the dignity and the safety of all of West Fargo residents, and we need to recognize that this is a much larger issue than simply the few residents that could be positively, negatively impacted by its proximity. This is a larger safety issue for the entire community. Conversely, you could approve this amendment and then possibly enable the ability for additional fentanyl to enter our community and additional sex trafficking to occur right in our backyard. So I pray that you make the right decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, John?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to clarify, tonight, you're not approving or disapproving any kind of, just for information to the public, this is a zoning amendment. Even if the fairgrounds wanted to expand, they would have to come back and apply for a conditional amendment. Only up to the commission if they want to approve the amendment. I just always get concerned when there's some confusion about the procedural issue. So this is about a zoning amendment. Even if the zoning amendment passes, the zoning amendment has certain criteria that the applicant has to, that would include a plan and some other things, then come back for another hearing. Some of the things you said might be completely relevant to the ordinance change. It's probably important to clarify procedurally. There's currently no application pending for an expansion. The city commission has asked the fair board to have a meeting with the residents. That wasn't legally required, required, they hadn't submitted an application. I just wanted to make that clear, just so that everybody knew what all of this is.
Thank you. Then, to that end, I will change my language and ask that you deny the zoning amendment or change to that, whatever the motion would be today. Let's not even provide that opportunity for man camps to enter anywhere within our territorial limit. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. It's still open for public comment. Is there anybody else that wishes to contribute? Seeing none, I will close the public comment portion. Commissioners. I got another question, Aaron. Was it an oversight that there was no zoning area specifically designating the opportunity for campgrounds? Or was it an, it was? Yeah. Done intentionally? And do we know when this was put together? Because there's other times we've seen where, hey, we forgot to give the opportunity for this type of use.
Yeah. I'm not sure. I don't think any, I'll ask Lisa maybe if she recalls any past conversations, but the ordinance we have, I think, was last kind of wholly, you know, reassessed or readopted, I think, in the mid-eighties. And at that time, I don't think staff's ever come across any time that campgrounds have ever been discussed, so.
True.
It may have been just something that wasn't thought of at the time. It's, staff doesn't know if it was intentional or not.
Thanks.
I believe the campgrounds that are there today were established in the nineteen-seventies, according to the Fairgrounds Association.
I have a follow-up question. So at the public hearings where the Red River Valley Fair presented the general idea of expanding the campground, it sounds like there were some alternatives that were discussed. Do we know, was there a more favorable reception to some of those alternatives? Because I, I thought I heard that maybe going north rather than going south would be a better option that we could maybe consider once the presentation is made or the conditional use permit comes in.
Yep. So the River Valley Fair Association put together kind of a general site plan for, kind of, conceptually, I guess, to show the commission when they originally made their request back in June. And that was the same kind of rendering that they, I believe they showed at the open houses that they hosted in July.
Sure.
Which essentially showed the campground expansion to the south and kind of southeast of the existing campground. Kind of nestled up against the drain that separates the campground to, from the neighborhood.
Sure.
And so there was a lot of discussion about, you know, the fairgrounds owns a lot of property over there, so, you know, is there, why don't you move it to the north or to the west or, you know, somewhere other than right here next to the neighborhood?
Sure.
And I think the response not to speak for them, unfortunately, Cody Cashman, the CEO of the association, they've got, I think, big hair going on right now, and so he was unable to attend tonight. But I think what he indicated was that's something they could certainly consider.
Sure.
They have not created any, you know, new renderings or different options. They want to wait to see how this process plays out before they start looking at alternative options, is what they have indicated to staff.
Sure.
So if I'm understanding correctly, Aaron, then there are other locations in this zone in the extraterritorial property that could potentially be impacted. So it's not that this ordinance is specifically for this and only this particular application, but could have some more broader implications?
And that's, that's an excellent point to bring up, and I apologize if I didn't clarify that earlier. And so this, this ordinance amendment would be applicable to all of the agricultural zoning district. So any, any property that's zoned agricultural, that's within our extraterritorial jurisdiction, would be eligible to apply for a conditional use permit for a campground. And so that not only includes the fairground property, but also includes areas, you know, way up north or, you know, west or areas in the county that are, you know, a mile outside of town, for example. And so, please keep that under consideration, too, when, when thinking about this. You know, we're not just talking about the fairgrounds. Although that was the catalyst for this conversation, this does open up the door to other folks in the, in the county that are within our jurisdiction to apply for this.
Is this a citywide ordinance, including the ET, correct?
Correct, yep. And then, as written currently, as drafted currently, there is a provision that this, the specific use of campgrounds and RV parks would only be allowed outside of city limits. So even if there is an agricultural property, own property within city limits, that would be disqualified under, as it's currently drafted.
Another question. And I appreciate, was it Mike? Another question, and I appreciate, was it Mike? If I got your name right? The concern that once this is approved, and I've seen that once you have something that is subject only to conditional permitted use, that it is a kind of camel's nose in the tent. So I think it's good to think through what could happen. Is there any way to add any language that might address things like transient housing, the whole man camp thing? Anything like that that could bolster any opportunity to be, to object to a permit application on the grounds that it was allowing other things other than the kinds of recreational opportunities that might be more amenable to a neighborhood area?
Yeah. I'll try and answer my question as best I can, and then I'll hand it off to you, John.
One of the things, if... One of the things I tried to add because... Once again, I want to emphasize, on the north side, if we should pass this, you try to add in provisions that require onsite manager and then a... Ends up without this. And so I'm trying to... Question is, then, obviously, if you have the ability to review those plans. I didn't want to get too specific because then I'm always concerned that people sort of think that I've already satisfied this part of the plan, and then somebody comes up with a new value concern. And so I tried to keep it somewhat general so that you have opportunity to review it. You could certainly not in some provisional criteria, but I'm not sure what...
Okay, okay. That's helpful. And I don't know if there is some specific language that might help narrow the application. And I don't know if it also is a concern to enumerate who can't stay there. That can open up other thing. And how do you determine that it's really transient housing versus somebody who says, well, I'm here for the summer and, you know, just happen to be working here? So I don't know if there's any potential to do this and if there's any recommendations that people might have to make this a little tighter framework.
I can maybe add a little bit more, just from staff's perspective. Like Mr. Shockley mentioned, you know, staff doesn't have any sort of really strong opinions on any of this. Again, this comes based on direction from city commission to draft something for them to consider. I will say that at the city commission meeting, when they did direct staff to draft an ordinance, the transient housing, the workforce housing did come up as part of that conversation. Cody Cashman, the CEO of the association, you know, was pretty straightforward in saying that. I think he even said that a majority of the folks utilizing the campsite today are the longer-term stay workforce, whether it's traveling nurses or, you know, construction worker here for the summer. Those are a majority of who's currently using the campsite. I believe Cody mentioned that they turn away something like fifteen, up to fifteen people a day looking for a place to temporarily lodge themselves with their RVs. And so I believe the city commission was pretty aware of that fact. It was explicitly talked about at the city commission meeting. In regards to your specific question about, you know, how to maybe perhaps handle that with a zoning ordinance, you know, there are certain things that could be done. For example, limiting the length of stay, you know, is one option of writing something like that into code. That's not something that, you know, staff would necessarily recommend. That's where it kind of comes down to that policy discussion. Relatedly, the MetroCog is currently working with a consultant on a Fargo-Moorhead metro housing study. And that study is very early in the process, but some of the preliminary data is pointing to a shortage in housing. We have a lot of vacant jobs, a lot of demand for workers, for workforce in this area, plus a shrinking housing supply over the past decade, which I think is resulting in what the Red River Valley Fairgrounds is seeing with those requests. So it all kind of interrelates. And so I'll just throw that out there for your knowledge and consideration as well.
So I'm just, to reiterate, it sounds like what this, what the plan or the proposal was initially from the fair was really about temporary worker housing and that that is the issue to be solved. And that may or may not obviate the need to have an expanded campground. And you're saying that there is something in the works, but with the housing study, I guess it would be at this point, but that that is probably slow to come. Is there anything that West Fargo can do to move some of that along? Because we obviously have a need for temporary housing, and this just doesn't seem to be a very good solution to it.
Yep, and I think everybody would agree with that. And so again, that study is very early in the process. Staff is working with MetroCog and the other jurisdictions and the consultant on that study right now. I would think that within the next several months, we would have something in front of you all to take a look at and consider and respond to. The scope of that study is somewhat limited. It's really kind of the first step in probably a broader community-wide discussion that will need to be had. It's really getting assessment, baseline assessment of what exactly is going on in the housing market in general at all, you know, price points, at all housing needs across the board. The other thing I was going to mention, too, is that according to the Fair Grounds Association, this discussion is really a joint venture between the Red River Valley Fair Association and Cass County. Cass County, I believe, and I don't know the relationship or the history, but Cass County is considering funding the campground expansion if they were to get, you know, zoning approval. According to Cody Cashman, the county sees a need for temporary workforce housing as it relates to like the FM diversion, for example. The county, I believe, funds a portion of the Fair Grounds Association. And this would, Cody has stated that this would be a revenue generator for the fairgrounds and relieve some of the need from the, from, leave some of the need for funding from the county. So that's a little bit of background, too, on kind of some of the comments that are coming up here.
So the question before us today is whether we should change an ordinance to allow for campgrounds, period. Whether this specific one is approved is the, would be the follow-on question. This is the change required to even ask that question at a later date, which we know will be asked after, if this is approved. If it's not approved, however, the question does not come up. Because it's not, and not an option based on our ordinance. So that's the question that we have.
Couple of quick questions, if I can. For clarity, could you, how wide does our ET area? Is it one mile or two miles?
Well, our exclusive extraterritorial area, I believe, is two miles. And then we have got what's called joint jurisdiction from two to four miles out roughly, which is just the opportunity to protest, basically.
Does this count to the four-mile number? Or if the...
This...
Where there's joint or goes all the way out?
Exclusive.
Just the exclusive?
This ordinance would, yeah, apply to our exclusive two-mile area.
Okay, so there's a lot of area that a campground could go in that might be a better positioning. Let's put it that way. If this was allowed. John, with the CUP, is that still, if ever approved, does that still stay with the original applicant? That's not transferable?
Typically, the CUP stays with the property. However, just a few years ago, we had a whole condition. I was... After the fairing, there is... Typically, the property, you could certainly put a duration on the CUP. Like, it's always difficult with the property owner because it involves, is it the same property owner? If they, like, LLC is owned by the same person, is that the same property owner? So the preference is if you have a concern, most of the issues put a duration on it.
Thanks.
I just wanted to, it was addressed in the ordinance for them to have a plan, if there were to ever have anything come forth with this, that the applicant would have to have a plan to manage noise or unwanted activities inside of there. Did I read that in the city plan? Or is that in the state? I just wanted to double-check on that.
Yep, it's required. I'm going to be here, it's hard to read. But this would be a specific requirement for the application for the specific use. I will say, too, that for any conditional use permit, we would typically ask for a site plan. And conditional use permits in general are, you know, it's kind of a utility tool for a lot of different land uses. And so depending upon the type of application, you know, staff might ask for some unique information in order to review based on the criteria, which, you know, if you were to read the ordinance for the approval of a conditional use permit, it requires that things like, you know, access, noise, impacts to adjacent properties, that those be addressed as part of the review process, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I read that correctly. I see somebody raising their hand, and I'll open it up to if there's other comments that...
Something's just coming to my head.
Please, again, state your name and address.
My name's Terry Thomason, 486 West Wind Drive. My house is, you know, the campgrounds where they camp now is on the north side. I was just thinking of the quality of air. Because today, when just those small groups have a bonfire on a nice night like this, when I want to have my windows, doors open, the smoke comes in. So quality of air. If there's going to be a bunch of campsites, campers having bonfires, the quality of air for the West Wind houses is going to be affected. It's going to affect our central air units, replacing our filters more. And Mike talked about, they were talking about planting trees along the drainage ditch. They planted trees there a couple of years ago, and the water district came and tore them out because they said that was going to affect the drainage ditch. So if they plant and unplanting trees, I think that's out of the question. So chain link fence, that's not going to do anything for us. So I would like you guys to consider the quality of air that we're going to be experiencing with more bonfires.
Okay, thank you. I believe those planting of trees, the reason that they had, that they were removed is they were within the right-of-way for the drain, for the water resource district. So they could plant those outside of that right-of-way.
I talked to a guy from Orange and Erin who was part of that. I asked him, why did he tear it down? And he said the root structures would go to the drain.
Right, right, because they had them planted within that right-of-way area. So they could go with outside that right-of-way.
Yeah, and if they plant trees, that means more leaves for the street, too.
Sure. Sure, why not? Yes, please. We're recording.
Mike Schumer, again. Just briefly, well-intentioned staff, no issue with staff at all. I think they're very well-intentioned. And as we're going through trying to figure out how can we craft this ordinance so that we can ensure the safety of all and so forth. Reality is, crime everywhere is illegal, and no matter how well-intentioned you are, people are going to break the law. People are going to do wrong. People are going to find loopholes. And who pays for that? All citizens of West Fargo pay for that. Law enforcement has to respond. Our attorney has to respond. Our staff have to work extra. It's additional expense when we have the opportunity to say not within our exclusive territorial zone. It's having a man camp. I mean, if we look at the western part of the state, we should learn before it, while we have the opportunity to prevent that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Wolf. I live at 716 West Wind Drive. I live further south than where the property or the proposal is for the RV park. But I just wanted to kind of circle around. I think the issue tonight is whether the Planning and Zoning Commission votes to allow for this type of campground or RV park to be allowed in the county, in West Fargo's extraterritorial zoning. And I would just urge you to vote against that. That's the first step into creating the RV park that we saw a drawing on, a proposal. And I think there are other options for that on Cass County Fairgrounds property, but the likelihood of that happening is very minimal. Where they have the current RV park is kind of already established. It's on a county road. We listen to the traffic there every night going up and down that road. So I would just urge you against even allowing this in an agricultural zone like they're proposing. You're hearing a lot of key words like traveling nurses, campground, RV. It all sounds great, but what it is, is it's a revenue generator for the fairgrounds, and this is their first step into creating that. So I just urge you to vote against it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, public comment is closed.
I would be more comfortable with this if we did insert something about temporary housing. And I know that, you know, yes, putting some kind of a limitation on it might be problematic. But is it possible? And that, under that number, say to add a C, that would be to limit stays to a certain period of time? Is that a feasible kind of recommendation so that at least it addresses part of it? And I know that doesn't address everything. So I would, I'm trying to think of some language here, and I would propose that as an amendment, if I could think of some language. The other thing that concerns me is B, which talks about a plan. And I think that was referenced here, that it's well and good to have a plan, but you can say you have a plan to do anything. It seems to me that it's more about not allowing certain kinds of activities, noise, disruption, et cetera, rather than a plan with how to handle it. So I feel like that B is a little bit weasely there. Again, I'm not sure about any language that might qualify that a little stronger.
Well, I'm, it was, I believe John mentioned it was intentionally worded broadly so as to keep from getting pinned in tightly. So it's, the broad language is intentional to keep it more all-encompassing, not easy to step around.
I get that, but what that ends up doing is supporting a proposal that might come in from a campground.
And the item C, which you worded, the other conditions, would be then defined as part of the conditional use permit, not in this ordinance where restrictions on usage, such as we were mentioning, the duration of renter or occupant be defined as a way to limit the transient issue that has been discussed a few times. issue that has been discussed a few times. So, I mean, we kind of have it there as, as a mechanism, but we're not defining it here. But by approving it, we open up to that opportunity to submit.
I, I think we've kind of exhausted the. Al, Aaron, if you would.
None that staff is aware of.
So, commissioners, any other questions? Discussion points regarding the ordinance, not the specific Red River plans so much as just this? Is this something we wish to add to the ordinance to allow for campground usage within our extraterritorial?
I guess I would just make the point that I'm very conflicted about a vote here because I do, I just would like this commission to remember if we approve this, that if something comes before us, we need to be very vigilant about how these issues and the concerns are addressed in whatever conditions we put on it. As I, I've seen us, whereas a conditional use permit, we might be a little bit lax and say, yeah, they've done enough and that's, that's good for us and we'll approve it. So, I'm really reminding us that we would have due diligence, need to exercise due diligence for any application, whether it's from the Red River Fairgrounds or anywhere else, that it actually addresses these concerns.
The commissioner, the conditional use permit applications come with public hearings as well?
Yes.
They do, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
There's the, there's actually two reviews, the general.
Yep.
And then the specific plans, both are public.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure because I think if.
Did I get that right?
Sorry, I might have missed that.
That conditional use permit typically is two. First, the general plan and then a detailed plan is also.
No, that would be for a planned unit development.
Okay, so I'm thinking about it wrong. So, conditional use permit is one.
Conditional use permit would be one public hearing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
But at that time, it would have the detailed plan associated, defined so that a vote could be taken with all that information available.
Yeah, we would ask for a site plan as part of the application process, along with details relevant to the request.
Good thing I asked.
Thanks for that clarification, sorry about that.
Well, I would take a motion of some sort from, on this because I think it's, it's rather relatively digital at this point. Yea or nay on this proposed amendment?
I would move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the amendment as presented. Any other discussion or questions prior to vote? All right, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Aye, I am opposed. But the motion passes. Yes?
So, I have a question.
Yes.
So, I talked about air quality. So, I have, your furnace has lasted 20 years. So, with the bonfires and stuff going on over there, who's going to pay for my furnace if they consult after 10 years?
I want to make it really clear that we did not approve their current plan. Right?
I believe there are other ordinance that would cover that within the city of West Fargo for air quality, so. Okay. Moving to item number five. City of West Fargo Planning Needs Assessment.
All right. So, item number five is the draft planning needs assessment. Hopefully you all recall previous discussions regarding this topic and previous participation in Zoom call and online questionnaire. But basically today, what we have in front of you is the first draft of the actual needs assessment. And so, today I'd like to just go over some of the highlights from that draft and hopefully have, if you're up for it, some informal discussion on any of your initial reactions or feedback you might have. And then, just to solicit additional feedback over the course of the next week or so as you have time to digest this a little bit more.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I did not read the whole thing yet.
Yes, that's just fine. That's just fine. So, yeah, we wanted to, you know, today just, just kind of introduce it to you more than anything and then again, give you some time to, to go back and think on it a little bit more. But maybe just to start with as a general reminder, the overview or overall purpose of this, this this whole process in general, the intent here is to clarify the exist, the city's existing planning and development related needs, to prioritize those needs and then to come up with some action steps or some strategy for how to address those highest priority needs. And so, the needs assessment in your packet today is really part one of a two-part deliverable. This part seeks to summarize and to prioritize the needs that the consultant has been able to identify so far in their, in their discussions with you all, with city staff and other CD leadership. So, once those priorities have been solidified, once this document is solidified, that's the point in time when the consultant would follow up then with part two of the deliverable, which would be the recommended action steps. But before they get there, they want to hear kind of your initial reaction to this. The intent is to take any comments received from staff, from you all, from city commissioners and, and revise this, this document as, as appropriate.
Aye, when?
The.
When would you like comment, I would like to.
Oh, yeah, so comments from you, if, if, if it sounds doable, maybe within the next week, hopefully by Tuesday, September 20th. Would be ideal, but certainly if you need more time, feel free to take time. And then the, the type of comments, the type of feedback will really dictate kind of the next step, if there's any need for additional discussions with the consultant or if it's just some minor things that need to be tweaked before kind of creating the final draft.
And I assume to you.
Yep, you can send them to me. I believe the consultant provided their direct contact info previously. I don't have that with me right now, but certainly feel free to reach out directly to them. Either way, we'll, we'll make sure that they get it. So, with that kind of background and overview, I, I thought I'd just take a couple of minutes to walk through the document itself and, and talk through some of the highlights, at least as I see them. And then, again, after that, we can have some general discussion if you guys have any initial, initial feedback here. So, with that, the document itself, I believe is broken up into four different portions or parts. The first is just the introduction. Talking about the project goals and kind of the overall intent here, which I highlighted a little bit just now. The process summary highlights the work completed so far. Again, that included just a review of relevant city documents, namely the West Fargo 2.0 comprehensive plan and some of the related recent planning documents that the city has. Solicitation of the initial feedback through the online questionnaire from probably two months ago now. And then a series of five different facilitated discussions over Zoom, one of which was with, with you all a couple of months ago here. They also held calls with various department staff. We tried to hit all the departments we could as best we could and make sure we get kind of a broad, broad response from, from different perspectives within the city organization as well. And so, the result, this document is basically the result of the feedback that they've heard over the last couple of months here. Included in this section is also a, kind of a, a sampling of some of the different survey responses, just to give you a flavor for some of the feedback that they did receive. I won't talk in, in great detail about this, but you know, a lot of the feedback was a little bit all over the board. I, I did have the opportunity to sit in on all the Zoom calls and, you know, there were certainly some, some commonalities, but also there were some some differing opinions on what the priorities were, which I think just kind of emphasizes the need to, to take some time to, to do this activity, which is good. On page 30 of 37 of the document, they've got the, I think they, they just referred to it as the whiteboard. But this was the, the primary focus of those various Zoom calls, those of you that participated will, will hopefully recall this, seeing this graphic here. But basically, they had same, same facilitated discussion for all five groups and they, they did their best to combine the, the final product from each of those discussion based on, you know, their notes and the discussion that, that was had in order to kind of arrive at what they felt like was, was kind of the, the general consensus of the, the five different groups here. So, this might differ a little bit from what you guys recalled during the discussion and what some of your, you know, maybe specific comments might have been. But just know that there was a lot of different voices that, that kind of went into this. The next section is the issues, needs and rationales. The, the issues identified generally fall into three categories. Funding, infrastructure and growth, which are all, you know, pretty interrelated and then probably don't really surprise anybody. The consultant did echo findings from the 2.0 comprehensive plan, which identifies challenges associated with West Fargo historically being more of a bedroom community to Fargo and just the general need to diversify land use to become kind of a more complete and competitive city. You know, anywhere from a quality of life standpoint to a fiscal and economic standpoint as well, by having the, kind of a more well-rounded types of land uses and, you know, for example, commercial, you know, revenue sources and things like that. So, that's, that's, a lot of these challenges are all kind of relative or related to some of that, some of those major themes from the 2.0 comprehensive plan. And so, the prioritization of these needs were really kind of reflective of those, of those larger challenge, challenges. The needs and rationale. Identified needs themselves are organized into three different, what they refer to as scales of planning. Number one here is vision and policy, which includes kind of the, you know, various master planning efforts that might be needed or some of the policy development related discussions. Number two is related to implementation, so that primarily relates to some of the regulatory tools that that the city has to help achieve that, that vision and that policy, namely the zoning code and some division ordinances that should be reflective of the city's overarching vision and policy. And then lastly, the third category is just administration, which includes focus areas for, for city staff to, to kind of focus in on. A lot of which is topics that are, are already underway or being worked on by various departments or city administrative currently. City administrat, city administrative staff currently. And so, I'll talk a little bit more in depth here. The following pages kind of detail what what needs they identified that fall into those various categories. So, in terms of the vision and policy needs that were identified, some of the, the topics that kind of came up were the, the downtown master plan update, recognizing that, I think the city's existing downtown master plan is roughly 20, 22 years old at this point. Certainly, the 2.0 plan did talk a little bit about downtown, but there's, there's probably a need to take a deeper dive into the, the different issues and related questions relating to downtown to, to keep some of the momentum going for Cheyenne Street North, just South Main Avenue there is, is the focus area there. Go theory of master plans, I think the big one that was discussed is the future area within the diversion alignment, the FM diversion alignment and the need to be prepared for when a lot of that land comes out of the floodplain upon completion of the diversion. Public arts and place making master plan, I think that one was one that's talked a little bit about in the, the 2.0 comprehensive plan. There is also relatedly some existing, or some state grants that are available, one of which the city just applied for for some place making master planning which could relate to this, this need and could, if the city were to get grant funding for that, for example, bump that up on the priority list. Mobility master plan relating to just transportation needs in general, a lot of that is work that MetroCog has historically done and is, will be doing into the future. So, just keeping an eye out for, for some of those opportunities to partner with MetroCog and some of the federal funding that is available through them and our partnership with them. Neighborhoods and housing master plan, this also relates to what I just mentioned previously tonight. The greater FM area housing study will really, I think, identify if there is some follow-up studies needed as, as part of that initial dive into that topic, for example. Comprehensive plan update, this was an area, I think, identified by various staff and things who really just identified some key things that maybe need some tweaking, I think, as a result of the conversation with the consultant. It's, at this point in time, we don't really need a, a full rewrite, but perhaps some small tweaks are in order. And certainly as we look further into the future, you know, that's something that we're going to need to have on our radar in the longer term. Some of the implementation items that were identified, again, related to, all related to the zoning code. So, the first is, is just some internal, you know, staff initiated text amendments, these are things we can do in-house. Some, some cleanup work, if there's ident, if there's issues that have been identified previously that, you know, might not take a whole lot of extra effort for staff to, to dig into and research and, and bring forward for a potential amendment for the, the short, short term. And then looking a little bit longer out, but still a near-term need is this idea of a unified development code update. And kind of the, if I were to summarize that one, that's talking about an update to our current zoning code, which again, I think was last comprehensively touched in the 1980s, so it is pretty dated, especially in relation to updated policies such as the 2.0 comprehensive plan. There's always a need for your, you always want your zoning code to reflect the, the current vision and goals of the city. Certainly, the city has done that in a number of ways, namely the downtown mixed use and entertainment mixed use zoning district are some examples of some amendments to the current zoning code that are meant to reflect the, the 2.0 comprehensive plan, for example. But this would be something that would kind of look holistically at, at the current zoning code and, and some tweaks there in addition to items that are not currently in the zoning code but relate to development in general. So, that might include things like stormwater management standards that might, that are in other sections of the municipal code, but kind of the, one of the best practices around the country is to try and bring all of those different various development related codes into one unified development document more as a, it's more user friendly to the development community, kind of make sure that the different sections are, are talking and a little bit better coordinated than maybe they historically are being housed within different sections of the city's overall ordinance and, you know, being administered by, by various departments. So, that's kind of what that one's all about. Then lastly is the sign code update. Which is a result of a Supreme Court case that kind of creates issues for sign codes all over the country and something. and something that, that we'll need to, to look at at some point here. So those were the implementation items that were, that came up as, through these discussions. And lastly, the administration, administrative items, again, primarily staff focused. Not necessarily the planning department staff, but staff throughout the city are, are working on these in various capacities. So things like the, the city's branding. Parking at the lights is something that I mentioned, I think, last meeting that, that we're taking a look at internally here. Economic development strategy, core infrastructure rehab, financial plan. The city did a core infrastructure master plan, I think, three-ish years ago. And so there, there's a plan out there, but the, the next question is how do we fund all these different projects that were identified as part of that master plan? And so it's not so much the planning as it is the, the planning to fund, fund these projects. Also related to the city's capital improvement plan. And then space management plan is an ongoing discussion as well. The city commission is currently looking at various space needs throughout city hall. Lagoon strategy, the lagoons are currently being decommissioned and early, our public works department is, is kind of spearheading that, that effort right now. Specific corridor, infrastructure, utility servicing plans. That's kind of a, a general catch-all category. A lot of that is, touches on some of the, the various corridor studies that MetroCog might help lead, as well as some of the future growth areas. So it's kind of interrelated to a lot of other topics that were discussed. And then brand management was again, related to that branding, identifying the, the city brands. That's ongoing discussion right now through our communications department as well. So those were the, the overall needs included in the, the table here. They've got kind of a status of if it started or if it's been launched or if it's been worked on previously. And then a general priority in terms of if it's a near-term, midterm or long-term, long-term priority. Ultimately, the end of the document, the last section here, next steps, talks a little bit about the process, next steps as, as far as this, this project is concerned. But I want to, what I want to emphasize here is just the last paragraph, the priorities. And then the last page of the document, which really identifies the short-term need. This is really leading into what they'll be working on next in terms of the action plan. And so looking at this, this is what they're starting to, this is what they're suggesting the city consider a top, top priorities for this coming twenty twenty-three budget cycle, for example. Again, it's broken down by those three different categories. And so the, from the vision and policy standpoint, they're suggesting that the downtown master plan is the highest priority need for the city of West Fargo at this time. In terms of the implementation, they are suggesting that the city, really city staff, take a look at any existing issues with the current code and bring, bring forward some of those kind of minor text amendments to kind of smooth out any, any issues that, that we are currently experiencing. And then at the same time, that would kind of lead into putting together some, some type of scope of work for unified development code update, which they identify here as being, that is quite an undertaking. And so that would very likely be a multi-year process, multi-budget cycle process. And so they, they recognize that, you know, something like that isn't necessarily something that could be done in, in twenty twenty-three, but it should be something that we're starting to kind of gear up for and talk about in the, in the near future. And then lastly, the administrative section, identifying economic development strategy. The city does have a new economic development manager who's kind of getting her feet underneath her right now and will be diving into some of this stuff very shortly. And then the core infrastructure rehab, financial plan and space management are kind of the three top staff items, if you will. So I'll stop talking. Hopefully that was helpful to you. I want to hear your initial thoughts, feedback. If you've had a chance to look at the document. If you haven't, that's just fine. Again, looking for any comments or feedback from, from you guys within the next week. Feel free to give me a call or shoot me an email with whatever comments you have or mark up the document, whatever is most convenient for you. And with that, I'll hand it back to you all to discuss or ask questions or what have you.
Anybody?
Just on that data, Aaron, you were looking for hopefully by Tuesday?
Yep, if possible, but if you need more time, that's, that's no problem at all. Thanks.
What kind of comments are you looking for? Are we? Or just providing our general?
Yeah, so thanks for that. Yep, just to clarify, we're not asking for any, you know, real action tonight. The, the next steps here, they've got a, I'll skim back up. Little Gantt chart in the beginning of the document here that talks about their process steps. And so this red line is roughly where we're at right now in the process and then looking forward here to, you know, some feedback and some revisions to this document before they dive into the action plan. And this is, none of this is set in stone, I, I will say. And so like I, I think I said at the beginning here, the types of comments and feedback that we get, I think will dictate what those next steps look like. If there are, you know, if we get comments that are pretty drastic or all, all over the place, you know, that might necessitate that we have a, a sit-down, you know, Zoom conversation with the consultant to kind of rethink some things. But if, if there's general agreement that, you know, this is, seems to be in line with, you know, my thoughts and what we've discussed or what have you, it might just be a matter of some small tweaks or some, you know, comments. So I don't want to lead you one way or another, so feel free to make any and, and all comments that you'd like. And then too, if you have thoughts on implementation, I'm sure the consultant would love to hear that as they gear up to put together that, that action plan. And some of the things that the action plan will, will look at are things like timelines, roles and responsibilities of, of different departments or stakeholders or entities, the necessary, you know, potential resources that might be required, whether it's staff time and then certainly the, the funding of some of this stuff. Anything that's consultant-led, for example, will have a, a price tag on it as well. And, and then we've asked that they make sure that the, any recommendations that they do provide are politically and economic or, or fiscally feasible as well to make sure it's kind of cost-constrained. So that's, that's kind of the intent anyway.
I have a question about, I understand in this needs assessment part that public really wasn't involved in that. It was really city officials and so forth. I'm just wondering as it moves on to the action plan, whether there might be identification of where public input is, is going to be sought and, and how to do that, especially things like the space management plan and so forth. Do you envision that coming out of the action plan?
Yeah, a little bit, to, to a certain degree, I'd say. And what I, what I mean by that is, you know, as they identify specific needs and some of the steps that, you know, we as a city should take to, to start to work towards addressing those needs. You know, you take, for example, like the downtown master plan. If we were to move forward with something like that and look to hire an outside consultant to come in and help us, help facilitate that process, you know, as we're drafting the, the request for proposals, for example, that might be a point in time where we want to, you know, take a pause and solicit feedback from the community or from different stakeholders that might be, you know, most impacted or, you know, have a, have some say or some thoughts on scope of work for a, a, a plan like that. And so they, I think they might be able to identify some of those points in time where, you know, before you, you know, go forward and hire somebody, you should stop and have these conversations or get that input, if that makes sense.
And will we be asked to actually approve the action plan at some point? Is that envisioned in the process here?
It is. I think once it's kind of cleaned up in final draft format, I think we'll bring the, the needs assessment and the action plan as kind of one package to you guys for a final sign-off and recommendation and then bring that to the city commission for their ultimate consideration. It'd probably be, you know, some, just more of a receive and file than anything. I don't know that we're, we're going to be asking the city commission to take any official, you know, action, but just more as a communication tool for this is what we found. And then related to the findings of this study, again, the intent is for this study to kind of dictate what the planning department's work plan is for twenty twenty-three and beyond. And so it's, that's kind of how it relates to, I guess, staff, at least in the, the planning department. Certainly the, by the nature of planning in general, it, it does touch a lot of other departments and administration. The intent isn't for this to dictate what the city administration, you know, does or doesn't do or what the city commission does or doesn't do in relation to the, you know, needs assess, or space discussion, for example. It's just more to provide some information, some findings, some additional thoughts for, for consideration for the city in general.
All right, are there any non-agenda items we need to discuss? And the last item is adjournment.
Second.
Move in a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, Aaron.